Good evening, folks. Welcome to the Village of Merrick Board of Trustees Regular Session for April 25th, 2022. Before I get started, I need a motion to close the work session. Second. All in favor? Okay. Please join me for Pledge of Leaders.
Hi, Pledge of Leaders. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I need a motion to open the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for April 25th, 2022.
So moved.
All in favor? Welcome to the Village of Merrick Board of Trustees.
Okay, we'll give it the feedback.
For.
Got a technical problem, Augie's gonna.
For this, I need a motion to close the work session. Second. All in favor? Please join me for Pledge of Leaders. Hi, Pledge of Leaders. To the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And now I need a motion to open the regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for April 25th, 2022.
So moved.
All in favor?
Your speaker is open, is that your computer? Laura, your speaker is open.
Laura. Record? We got it now?
Yeah, now you don't hear. The re-sound is coming from our machine.
Okay, very. Okay.
Okay, good evening. I need a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
All roll.
Trustee Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas?
You're muted, Nora.
It, Nora. Nora? Go, yes, Nora?
Can you hear us, Nora? Wave your hand if you can hear us.
Nora, can you hear us? Nora? Can you hear us? Okay, we can't hear you. I see you hear me. She can't hear me? Having a little technical difficulty.
Can't hear you. Can you hear us? Okay.
Okay. We can't hear you, Nora.
She understands and she's trying to.
I'm talking to Nora, Dan.
She can't hear you, what I'm trying to tell you.
No, she said she could hear. She gives a thumbs up. Just stay out of it. How come we can't hear you, Nora? You can hear us, okay? All right, for the time being, we'll let Nora do auto, your hand vote.
Okay, let me start again. Trustee Lucas?
Yes.
Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
No. Okay, now let's get on to the agenda. First item on the agenda is, and we have a long agenda tonight, we're approving the budget. The first item on the agenda is communication to the board. I don't see anybody with their hand up. Mr. Whitman, put his hand up. I got it all. Mr. Whitman, unmute yourself.
All right, can you hear me now?
Yeah. Can I help you, Mr.?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment. I happened to listen to part of the work session, and I'm glad you were discussing the issue of the dam and all that goes with it. It just struck me that you're in kind of an awkward position. You have kind of a conflict of interest. You're an executive of the waterworks, and you are our mayor. So how can you make a contract with yourself? How do you, you know, you really need to recuse one way, one way or another, because you can't, you can't make a deal with yourself. It just doesn't make any sense. And I, furthermore, I just don't see the nature of the emergency. It's, you know, it's an ongoing problem, probably since the dam was built. And I'm glad you approached it in the work session, and we'll try to work it out. But I really urge you to keep ethics in mind and do this properly.
Thank you, Mr. Lim. Just to give you some history, your friend, Mr. Teeket, brought that up one time, and it was opined by the village attorney that I did not have a conflict of interest, and that was checked out already, but thank you for bringing that up. But let me remind you, as a member of the planning board, anytime you appear before another board, you're supposed to identify yourself as a member of the planning board.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry for interrupting you. I overlooked my note. I wanted to mention publicly that I am a member of the planning board, have been since 2016. I am the president of the Hawthorns Gardens Co-op here in the village, and I'm also a candidate for trustee, but I was appearing tonight solely as an individual resident of the community.
You don't get to do that.
I apologize for not doing it first. I overlooked my note.
Okay, horse before the cart. Thank you for your input. But I'll see if I can get your opinion that the village attorney had the right based upon your friend, Mr. Teekert's previously have brought this up.
I have not spoken with Mr. Teekert, so.
Yep. Nobody else has their hand up? Let's go right to the public hearing. Public hearing on fiscal year 2023 final budget resolution. Okay. Need a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Nora seconded, affirmed with her hand. We call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Trustee Natchez?
Yes.
Trustee Lucas? Trustee Tofor?
Yes.
Murphy?
Aye, thank you. Okay. Now, the first item on the agenda is Resolution Resolution A. This is Village of Merrick Resolution summarizing the tentative 2022-2023 Village Brother Budget for Finalization as adopted budget. As you can see from the summary, the appropriations of $41,320,290. And that was the, in the tentative, the adjusted is $41,576,803. Less estimated revenue other than real estate taxes, $13,455,388 that is not real estate taxes, including wide varieties, fees, meters, and and, I'm sorry, and sales tax, and appropriated fund balance of $600,000. The amount to be raised by real estate tax levy is $27,521,415. I need a motion to approve budget Resolution A.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, we got you back. There you go. Augie, call a roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Yeah. One minute. Budget Resolution B, Resolution adopting a budget for fiscal year commencing June 1st, 2022 and ending.
Excuse me, excuse me, Mayor. I'm sorry to interrupt, but do we, if it's a public hearing, is the public allowed? I see your hand up.
I think he just hasn't put his hand back down.
But maybe we can ask.
Mr. Whitman, you don't want to speak on a budget, right? Your hand is just up from before.
From before.
Okay. I'm gonna lower your hand. Res, okay, where was I? Okay. Item Resolution B, just two, everybody see it in front of you? I need a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Call a roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. 2022-2023 Village Tax Levy and Warrant Setting the Tax Levy Rate. Everybody sees it in front of us? Any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion.
Second.
Augie, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Library Tax Levy and Warrant. The library conducts its own vote every year on its taxes that it's held in December. The public is allowed to vote on that. And then what the village does is the village has a line on your taxes that says library tax. We collect that money, and then we, we give it to the library. So we are just a pass through. The library doesn't have taxing authority on itself, so, by itself, so they have to go through the village. I'm just explaining what that is. And this year, their budget is $2,905,876, which was approved back in December. Questions or concerns? A motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
We was.
Yes, yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. 2023 Certificate of Arrears Due for Unpaid Amounts Receivable on Various Properties, Including Such Amounts. It should be amounts, it says amounts, in the annual tax levy and authorizing the levy of same upon the real property in the village in default. These are people who haven't paid their taxes. Augie, is that right?
Yes.
And, okay. The only change I would have is just the typo, including such, it should be amounts, okay? So with that change, I will make the motion.
Second.
Augustino, call a roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Westchester Water Works arrears for water charges on various properties. What this is, is that when people go delinquent on their water bill, the water company sends it to the village. The village then collects that money through the property taxes, and it also collects transfer fee, which accrues through the village's benefit. So obviously, it's important to pay your water bill on time. But if you don't, we're gonna get you into taxes, and this year it's $87,683.99 that we need to be collecting. I need a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Option Tax Warrant, you are hereby commanded to receive and collect from such several persons named in the tax receipt here to annex the sum, the several sums in the tax receipt for 2021, here of opposite their respective names, bringing a total to $3,000,051,170.99. This is just what we're collecting in the current budget for the library district from unpaid water arrears, special assessments, and from prior levies unpaid. So it's just, this is just the amalgam of everything that we've just talked about. It comes to $30,515,170.99. So may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Hold on. Right, authorization for investments? Right on.
You just said tax form, it was G, now we're on H.
Right, okay. I skipped one. Thanks. I was just testing you, Laura. Yeah, very good. You are hereby commanded to receive. My pages are screwed up. Okay, Budget Resolution H, reallocating funds within the appropriations to provide for salary increases for non-직원 employees. And below is salary schedule. Right there in black and white. Somebody have any questions or concerns? I'll make the motion. Second. Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Budget Resolution, Village of Merrick Budget Authorization for Investment, resolved that the Village of Merrick Court Treasurer and Deputy Treasurer during the fiscal year beginning June 1st, 2022 authorized to invest money is not needed for immediate expenditure in accordance with provision of general municipal law, the local finance law, and village investment policy. I'll make that motion.
Second.
We.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Budget Resolution, Village of Merrick Charges on Various Properties to be included in the tax lift. Okay, this is $250. And what is this for?
The cleanup of the property, we had to hire companies to clean up properties that are abandoned and are not taken care of.
Okay, great. Or abandoned houses, very good. I'll make the motion. Second. Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Item K. Village of Merrick Budget Termination of Exempt Status, 5020 S, Resolution authorizing the levy and the collection of additional taxes upon termination of exempt status. That are a couple of exempt statuses, a veteran's extent, says, is there a senior citizen? Exempt status? Yes. So if somebody sells a house to somebody who doesn't fall in that category, we then reassess, you know, put it back to the taxes the way it's supposed to be. That's what this gives you, the authority.
Exactly.
I will make that motion.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. And that concludes the passing of the budget. I'd like to thank staff and the Board of Trustees, all the hard work in the budget committee, all their input, and the residents who also had input. And I see that my friend Glenn has his hand up, and since he is a stellar member of the budget committee. Mr. Tippett, unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for their hard work. There were a lot of difficult decisions to make, and I think the board at the end got together with staff, and you really did a yeoman's job of putting together this year's budget. You know, nothing, nothing is perfect, but it, it, it's the best conclusion that you could come to, you know, with the information that, that you had. I think you did an excellent job. Just have to be a little bit careful with some of the expenses and some of the income. You know, a lot of it is a little bit with speculation at the end of COVID, but overall, I think staff and trustees, everybody had a lot of input, and I think you all did an excellent job. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you, Glenn.
Okay. I need a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. There's a little bit of housekeeping here on the next item. An emotion to open the public hearing to exceed the tax cap, which we did not do.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
This is a pitching duel, you realize that, Don?
What?
Yeah. I'm gonna mute Glenn.
Tofor?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Okay, we've opened a public hearing. We don't need this law. I propose that we close the public hearing and let it die a natural death.
So moved.
I'll second. We call the role of closing the public hearing.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye. As they say, it died on the vine. All right. All right, let me get to my, thank you. Give me one second, folks. Thank you, Walt, for your cooperation in getting that done. I think that was the smoothest I've seen it done.
I'll take credit for that.
Item two A, Resolution authorizing budget amendment for over budget accounts. Okay. So appropriating fund balance, $5,500 to utilities electric, appropriating fund balance, $13,000 to utilities elected, or electric, appropriating fund balance, $20,000 to utilities telephone. Questions or concerns? Make a motion? I'll make the motion.
So moved. Oh, you made, you made a motion?
Yeah.
I'll second.
We call a roll, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you. Budget amendment for POX OT. This is taking $7,731.64 from the field maintenance line and appropriating to the POX overtime line. Any questions, concerns?
Can we give it a little explanation on that?
You do, Dan, you're muted, pal. Okay, you're still muted. You're muted, so you're not. Augie's gonna ask, Augie's gonna handle this one.
Yeah, we get extra fees for the maintenance of fields from the different leagues. Those extra fees that weren't anticipated for were appropriating the revenues in accordance with the amounts received and adjusting the expenditures respectively.
That's the question, what's the overtime for?
Maintenance of the fields. So. Okay. Do you have a motion, a second?
No.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yep. Resolution, authorization to execute budget transfers to cover overfunded accounts. Recreation Department from supply, $408 from supplies to office equipment, storm ida recovery, $5,000 for meals to cover overtime. Contingent funding for overtime as a result of St. Patrick's Day parade, $4,321 going to the celebrations overtime line. Lunch. And questions or concerns?
Who's that? You give a number that's different from what I have, 4,000?
4,231.72.
Oh, that's right, sorry.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Aye, thank you. The abstract of the order to vouchers is the next item on the agenda, two D. It is $913,296.58. Questions or concerns?
I have a question on page three through six. There is refunds of open permits. Is that because they've been closed out, and this is a refund for what was not expended, or something else?
Well, these, these are the refunds of the deposits that are left for the street opening permits. These are. Yeah, they're all five, that's the deposit for the street opening permit is $500. So once the work is done, we, we pay the 500, we return the $500. I'm guessing it's just between everything we've had to account for these last six months, this is just a batch process and many, many street opening permits.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions or concerns? Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Augustino.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? He said yes. Mayor Murphy?
Aye. Hey, well.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on my agenda, there's no old business, new business. For A, Resolution authorizing execution of contract for completion of comprehensive plan.
Let me ask a question. Where's the contract? It's not on the agenda. Lockup.
It was included.
I see a resolution, but I don't see any contracts.
It was included. It was included with the work session on the, from the 11th.
See, we don't approve things on the work session. We move them to regular session.
And this was moved to regular session. This is the, but the, the contract was presented to the board at the meeting on the 11th. It was the proposal, so we execute the proposal.
Where, where is it?
It was on the work session on April 11th when the board reviewed it.
Did we, did we change this? Because the, I'm working off an agenda that I downloaded over the weekend, and I have the wrong price. Did you put, did you change the resolution to be 22,000?
I did not, but the, we're not asking, we're not asking for the entire amount. There is money left in the Board of Trustees' contractual services line. So I believe the 20,000 gets us to the, the 22,000.
Right, but the, but the we didn't approve a $38,000 contract.
I, that's.
We haven't approved anything yet, but we didn't.
You're right, it's, I believe it's 22,000. So yeah, we, we can work and choose to amend the resolution that we're as clause, and, you know, it'll be properly reflected in the minutes.
What's the total of the contract, and where, where is it exactly? So we know what we're voting on.
Let me look up the April 11th, 2022 work session agenda.
The schedule and the price, that's all we.
Share my screen in just a moment. 22,500. Here's the worksheet, the number of hours to complete each task.
What we don't have is a timeline.
Yeah.
Timeline is a three to four months. That was part of the proposal as well.
Okay.
It's three to four months and up to five months to adoption.
So what, what number should be in there?
It should, well, the, the number is correct. It's the number that's in the middle of the resolution. It's 22,500, not 38,700.
22,500.
Yeah, the assistant village manager had a problem when he prepared the resolution last week.
Okay, we get a lot right here. You're allowed to uphold rules at all.
But the, the 20, the 20,000 is enough to fund this expense, given what's, what already exists in the Board of Trustees line.
Gotcha. Is that okay with everyone?
So here's a que, I, if, so did we need 20, if the, if the project was only 22,5, did we need 20,000 or was it, we did need 20,000?
I, I believe we did need 20,000. I, I don't have access to KVS right now, so I, I don't know what the available balance is.
Let's assume we do. And if we don't, we could always put it back.
And it'll fall the fund balance.
Yeah.
Unless the board goes crazy with their, the dinners for, we pay for, for attending board meetings in the next six weeks.
I don't think so.
Okay.
Yeah, my comment is it would be up to the 22, the resolution. And, and stressing that, that the, that the timeline is not to exceed a, I, I had suggested four months. I remember this was ready to go.
So it says.
Because we're not even approving a contract. We were approving a resolution without a contract.
Yeah.
So what are we, what are we really doing?
But what the resolution does is, is it allows the village manager to sign a contract. We don't sign contracts.
No, but we do get, get presented as long, well, at least for the last many years, we've represented with a, with a proposal, with an actual letter contract or something of the sort, because.
But Victor, we were on April 11th.
No, no, this is a proposal. I see it here and I commented before, then it was brought down a bit, but, but this is just a this is just a draft memorandum. This is not a contract. This is a draft memorandum.
So I don't know about this. Up to 23,500, a proposed fee of up to, not to exceed 23,500. And delivery of product within four months.
Completion of, of completion of work within four months.
Okay.
I, I actually think the right, the right work, work, way to do this is, is to, is to, is to authorize him to move forward, but to present, to, to, to bring us back, to bring us back, what, what is exact, what, what exactly will be agreed on? So we can approve that with, with the, with the requirement that he brings this back. So that, so that in, you know, you don't get extend, extend this for another year or so. That, that's really my concern.
Okay, but.
Shouldn't be that way.
I have the same concern, but that is also dependent upon how the Board of Trustees brings things to finality. You know, sometimes we met the enemy and he is us.
So that, that, that's why this should be, this should be put in a way that is just having them do the work, bring it to us and finish it off, because it's six years on a comprehensive plan update, which is really.
I agree with you.
Absolutely.
It's symptomatic. So let's put, let's put it in the resolution, not to exceed 23,500 and work to be completed. We'll put in it 23. 23, 500. And work to be completed within four months' time of the adoption of the resolution.
22,500?
Is it a 23,500? It says 22,500.
The, the exhibit says 22,500.
22,500.
Up to 22,500 within four months.
Is that right? 22,500?
Yep, I have it. 22,500.
Up to 22,500, my mistake. And work should be completed within four months' time of the adoption of this resolution.
Right. All right. Thank you all.
The word for you? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll make that motion with the, with the amendments that I just stipulated.
I gotta stop sharing.
Second. We have a second. Please call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Item 4B. Resolution supporting legislation to amend general municipal law, civil service law, retirement, social security law, public health law in relation to emergency service workers. This is something that Shelley Mayer and State Senator Shelley Mayer and Steve Otis are working on to allow EMS workers to be treated more fairly in the pantheon of of providers of emergency services. Many of these folks work part times in many municipalities and they go from shift to shift to shift. You know, they don't get enough work in one municipality to feed their families and this, this would help with that and to put them on a par with their importance. And if you've ever had to call an ambulance and I hope none of you ever have to, you know how important they are when they arrive on the scene and start saving your life. So I will make a motion to send this resolution supporting our two elected officials in their quest to make life more fair for emergency medical service workers.
Second. Augustino, call the roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four? Trustees? Murphy?
Hi. Item 4C, resolution referring wireless edge recertification to specialist permit to planning board. It's just allowing us to go to planning board for planning board to do their work. This is at the salt shed in the village of Amerik, provides cell service to a large area of the village and is, is in a spot that is less intrusive than, than some other spots. Salt shed, for those who don't know, is Wolf Fenimore Avenue, Fenimore Road, when you go in toward the 95, it's on the left. Trustee Natchez, you have your hand up?
Yes, I do. At the last work session where this was infused, I asked two questions. What would the dollar amount that we get for the, on an annual basis? And do we have insurance? We don't, we, is the village name, is it additional name insured? I was told we would have that for this meeting.
We are an additional insured. As far as the revenue, I, I don't have access to KVS. I don't, can't get the answer right now. But I think between the two cell sites, Augie, don't we get about $90,000 a year, give or take?
Well, I can't tell you that.
But I, I think it's somewhere around 40. If we're getting 90,000 from the two sites, I believe.
I think it's 50 down in the harbor. So maybe it's 40 over there.
Yeah, so it's, we're getting 40,000 a year for that site, Dan.
I'm pretty sure the harbor is 50.
And, you know, it's also predicated on the revenue they're earning. And they're looking to add an additional carrier, so that would increase our revenue as well.
And this, this is for the, this is for the one on, on Fenimore? Or as well? Where's the other one?
This, this is just for the one on Fenimore. Wireless Edge manages the Fenimore site. A company called American Tower manages the Harbor Island site.
That's a separate company.
Yes, it is.
Okay. Need a motion. So move.
So are you saying that we get $40,000 a year for this, for this one on Fenimore?
I, I believe that's the case. I, I believe between the two sites, we're getting 90,000. And the mayor's recollections, that we're getting 50 for the harbor site, so that would be 40,000 from this site, but I can, I, I will definitely confirm that tomorrow morning.
Please do. Thank you.
Need a second.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustees? Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. The next up is 4D, resolution authorizing Fireman's Carnival dates and street closures for a parade. The Fireman's Carnival is going to be from, geez, June 24th to July 5th. Boys are going to town this year. So they're, they're gonna need Harbor Round Park from June 17th to July 6th, including lights on lands of field. Understanding that the day camp is held and it will be held. We'll be operating in the park and areas that will not have the carnival. When is the parade? Does it say you want a parade?
30th, I think. 29th or 30th.
29th.
Is it in the resolution?
Yep, at the end.
Ah, okay. Thank you. All right. The Fireman's Carnival is a fundraiser for the fire department that's split between the firehouses that they use for scholarships, for parties and for various other operations that are not funded by the village of Amerik. But it's, it's, it's a fun time. I know I've enjoyed it since 1979. My children have enjoyed it and I'm looking forward to bringing my grandchildren. Any questions or concerns?
Need a motion?
So moved.
Second. Augustino?
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing funding request for Fenimore Prospect Avenue intersection improvements. We've talked about this. We've had many, many, many residents come to us complaining about how really dangerous it is to cross Prospect and Fenimore. I can attest to it, having lived there for most of my time in the village of Amerik. It's especially dangerous if you're pushing a stroller or carrying a kid. Mr. Barbario has decided to do most of the work in-house. He's contracted out for some of it. To work product of value of under $35,000. We need a source of funding. 62,000 should be sufficient. Resolve therefore that the Board of Trustees authorizes the clerk treasure to create a capital budget account for Fenimore Prospect Avenue Improvement Intersection with a budget of $62,000. Any questions or concerns?
This is really, this is really good because he's using those bulb bouts.
He's using those bulb bouts.
Which really slows traffic down. It, it's remarkable psychological thing with drivers.
It's a traffic calming measure and they're gonna put plantings in to make it very attractive. This was supposed to be done in the fall, but we have this little thing called IDA. And that pushed it back. So we're gonna get it done now?
They're gonna pollinate it, so it's all right.
Yeah. All right, I'll make, I'll happily make this motion.
Second.
In, in, in full disclosure, I have family members who travel this route constantly. So I'll disclose that that's happening. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Nora, second. Thank you, Nora. Please call a roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Next is a resolution authorizing the serving of alcohol at the Amerik Avenue School PTA parent night event. I know what was happening here. The Amerik Avenue School wanted to have a PTA event. And previously they had had it at restaurants. And that precluded a lot of their parents from going because they really couldn't afford a night out at a restaurant for mom and dad. That wasn't in their budget. So Amerik Avenue Parent PTA in, in just to show a good sense, decided to keep the price way, way down. And they're gonna do something that everybody can attend down at our harbor. And I think it would behoove us to allow this. They're just gonna have a little beer and a little wine. It's just so folks know to, to, to consume alcohol at Harbor Round Park. The only way you could do it is if the Board of Trustees votes to allow it. I will happily, although I abstain from alcohol, I will happily make the motion that we allow a little bit of beer and wine for our friends at the Amerik Avenue School PTA.
Do not abstain in my second. Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing purchase of village street sweeper. This is $300,000 to replace the current piece of equipment. Street sweeping is, you know, $303,140. Street sweeping is very important to our community. If we keep the streets clean, our waterways stay clean. Because if you didn't know how we get rid of our stormwater is we dump it right into our rivers. And that's the way it's been since time in Memorial. If we were redesigning this place, we wouldn't do it that way. But that's how it's been done. If you, if you live in like New York City, it's a combined sewer system where the sanitary and the stormwater all gets treated at the same spot. But we don't have that kind of money here. So that being said, I need a motion to authorize a purchase of a new street sweeper.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Nora. Thank you, Luke.
Call roll, please.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. 4H, resolution authorizing purchase of steel and glass door at the police department. Anybody having questions or concerns about this? This is to, you know, make sure the police department has the maximum safety and security in its facilities. That building needs a lot, a lot of work. You know, oftentimes people come into the police department. They are extremely agitated and we want to make sure that there's a, a line of protection between our officers and folks who might be overwrought about and suffering.
I appreciate that they got a nice grant for this.
Yes. They've been, they've been actually very good at grants. They, they got a grant to do the body cameras, which I hope we are up and running with soon. And your, and your motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Augustino?
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution adopting of employee handbook. Do they have any questions, concerns? Like every, every employer now has an employee handbook. It's part of the modern employment. I'll make the motion.
Second.
Call roll.
Trustees Young?
Yes.
Natchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Whereas the village of Amerik is a recipient of $1,962,147.99, 95 cents in the American Rescue Plan opa funds, 50% of which was received in June 2021. And whereas the Board of Trustees has reviewed programmatic And whereas the board of trustees has reviewed, re-reviewed programmatic guidance and rules based upon the review of several work sessions meeting and at their March fourteenth, twenty twenty-two work sessions meeting, adopted by resolution that the first round of OPA funds be used as follows. Flood mitigation engineering study, uh, area east of Fenimore Road and west of Amerik Avenue, south of Interstate ninety-five and north of the MTA rail line in some and substance, Washingtonville. Uh, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, an affordable housing program, four hundred thousand dollars, sewer rehabilitation, which is ongoing, uh, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And the river gauges that we spoke of here, the fifty thousand. Okay, I will make a motion and we adopt that resolution.
Discussion, may, may I? I do have an addition here. I just wanna make sure that everything, uh, I think there's mention of following all the regulatory, uh, I mean, the, of the requirements from, from the federal government, but let's also include state and local. Let's make sure that we're not just authorizing that things be done without getting the, the necessary permits and approval. So I wanted to include a line on that.
What do you want? Just tell me what you want.
I'm trying to open the, give me one second. What item is this? Page, uh?
Uh, J.
J.
How about this? Now therefore be resolved that the village manager is requested to undertake the action necessary to effectuate the implement, implementation of these projects, including preparation of RFPs, compliance reporting to the United States Treasury, and that you should probably stick it in there after that. What do you wanna say?
And all, and all, and all, uh, required state and local permits.
Receiving all required state and local permits. Okay? As required. Uh, uh, including, uh, trustee to fours amendment, I'll make the motion.
Uh, one more question?
Can I wait? Could I just, I thought we were gonna go on the such, also to the other side of Fenimore.
No.
To the, we're not including the industrial area.
No.
Well, my recollection also, there was some discussion about whether or not this would also be, uh, the, that would involve any examination of Florence Park area. Uh, that came up at the flood mitigation advisory, but he, uh, uh, that, uh, trustee, uh, that just will recall. And I'm, uh, and it was, so I don't know, I, I don't know if this has changed or not, or if that is still, uh, happening somewhere else.
This is my recollection of what we approved that night.
This was, I, I, I copy, I basically copied this from the minutes from the March eleventh, uh, work session when, uh, these decisions were, were made.
Okay, uh, subsequent to that, Dan, do you recall that, that the FMAC had asked about the Florence Park as well? And, and, and you said that a hundred fifty thousand dollars ago were in Florida, you wanted that, that you would bring it? I don't know, did we, we think about it?
The ever, the flood, the FMAC wishes a study to be done on Florence. I'll call the expanded Florence Park area.
Yeah, yeah.
And that needs to be done. That was not included in this hundred and fifty thousand.
Right, right, right.
And that, that needs to be done, but we haven't, you know, got a budget for it.
Yeah, okay.
This is a reminder, we're getting another payment.
And I've made a motion with Victor's amendments. Is there?
Second.
A second. Please call roll.
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
This?
Yes.
The four?
I said, yes, I'm sorry.
Uh, yes, and I'd like to thank, uh, President Biden for, uh, passing this and, uh, over strenuous objection from some folks. And, uh, this is money that the Village of Amerik would not have been receiving and that we are gonna put to good use to make our community a better place. Your credit, we're due. Okay, Adam four K, resolution authorizing purchase of bailout system and turnout gear for our friends at the fire department. We are taking a hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred dollars out of appropriate fund balance and we are putting it toward fire department equipment. I just wanna point out that in the budget, uh, there were, I think, roundabout figure, four hundred thousand dollars that was gonna be capitalized. Uh, we took that four hundred thousand dollars and put most of it back in the operating budget because they were, they were, you know, it was viewed that these are things that should be, uh, in the operating budget. And this was the only, uh, item that we didn't put back in the operating budget, uh, because, you know, we have ample, uh, surplus and the surplus, uh, one of the things that can be used for and should be used for is, uh, for public safety. And, uh, what better way to spend it than on the men and women who keep us safe? Uh, so that they have, if they have to bail out, which means they actually have to jump out of a burning building, uh, they can do it and live to see another day. And turnout gear, when turnout gear is, it's, that's the, the whole garb that the fireman wears when he goes into the building, that big coat, hat, and, you know, the gloves and the other equipment, which is very expensive and very fire resistant. Uh, and wears out after twenty years. Ten years, it's a ten-year shelf life. Okay, so that's what this is. I will make the motion.
Second.
Augustino? Trustees, young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Yes, and thank you to, uh, men and women in the fire department. May they never have to use.
So then we're trying out, we're working out with a new truck.
That's right.
Around today, yeah.
Yeah. They, they, they like that. Resolution scheduling public hearing on PLLC. This is, uh, the moratorium on residential development in the C one and C two zoning districts. This is, this, this does not affect anything but residential development in the C one and C two zoning. What this would be doing is scheduling a date, uh, for considering having a public hearing. So, uh, resolution, we're gonna schedule a public hearing. And so, you know, we can schedule a date in the future, but I, 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 I would hope that we would move on this, you know, expeditiously and not just let it languish. Because it, you know, what I wanna do, very narrow study on the C one and C two district in the flood zone, because that is where the majority of the new development is gonna happen. It's the only place where it can happen. Uh, to put a moratorium on the whole flood zone will mean that people, uh, in homes could not take out building permits, they could not do, uh, extensions to their home, and that is not the problem. The problem is these big apartment houses, uh, that can get built, that can still get built in the flood zone. And we, you know, we'd be putting people in harm's way knowing that. And that to me is, uh, a serious situation. So.
I do have a question. There's no bad law as a backup, backup. And the resolution is, is not, I mean, I don't think you have a full backup here. The, I, as I, I don't oppose it, there are things in principle, but in order for me to support this, it has to be really narrow, it's really specific, really clear. And that's precisely what I don't see happening precisely. And that, a good example is that we, if you look at the backup here, there's no law.
There was not, there isn't. In the backup, it, it was in the backup of the, uh, work session.
Well, there, there was, there, no, there was no, there was no law in the work session. And this says we're holding the public hearing tonight. We, in the work session, wait, wait, the work session, we had a proposal from the consultant, but we didn't get to that.
That, that, that's different than, we can set a moratorium, not a proposal from the consultant.
I, but I had said I wouldn't. We did that once and it took two years, so I'm not gonna do that again. I said that.
No, Nora, this is a very narrow proposal. That took two years because people kept expanding the scope. This is very narrow.
In any case, there's no law. How can you?
Let me finish.
Okay.
Let's get the law as the backup. We'll come back to this in two weeks. We'll put out a profit date on it and we'll get everything in order.
We would have to go to work session.
And the scope. And the scope of the proposal. When we had that, we didn't.
Wait, 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 excuse me. The scope of the proposal is different than scheduling a public here.
Oh, um.
You, but you need to know what you're gonna do before, and with that, you can drive along.
Okay, I, I understand.
Put, put things in order and see if this gets in the right track.
All the so for two weeks. Thank you. We'll come back to this in two weeks. But this is where things are. Uh, resolution supplementing appropriation to fund emergency cap repair of sidewalk in front of Florence Park. Okay, this is twelve thousand, six hundred from the appropriate fund balance, uh, to transfer capital fund from, to the capital funds. Do you wanna talk about this a little, John, Dan?
Sure. There's a failure in a sidewalk in front of Florence Avenue Park. Uh, we want to take care of it, uh, quickly. Uh, there's no, uh, funding for this item. We, uh, solicited three quotes. We only received one, one response, uh, from, uh, Joe Chalelli. It doesn't, it, it's under thirty-five thousand dollars. It'll be whatever by the manager. But we need a, for a source of funding so we can actually, uh, pay the contractor to do the work.
It, when you say sidewalk in front of Florence Park, where in front of Florence Park?
Uh, on the Florence side of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. So it's, it's near, by the, by the fence in front of, the chain link fence in front of Florence Park.
It's near.
On four sides. So.
But it's, it's on the chain link fence on the Florence Avenue side of.
Okay, that, that's what I, I just wanted to make sure we were talking about the right sidewalk.
Yep. Thank you.
Okay, any questions? Uh, I see somebody has a hand up. Ms. Ronnie has a hand up. You got that all?
Yep.
Ms. Ronnie?
Yes, I actually wanted to speak on the, um, resolution that you had forward on the C one and C two district moratorium.
Yeah, go ahead. You do it.
I'm not sure if you're aware, but I think since you're rescheduling this and moving it forward, I think you need to look at the transit oriented development overlay zone, which is within the C one or two, C two district. Because if you aim to deal with residential, uh, there's a provision in there that allows for residential in the transit oriented development zone.
Yes, that, that, that's exactly what we're looking at.
Yeah, I know, but you're only limiting it to the C one and C two district, not also the transit oriented development overlay zone.
But we, we'll handle it in the course of it.
All right, I, that's what I wanted to tell you before. Thank you.
Thank you very much, during. Have a good evening. Uh, okey dokey. What do we have, what we, sidewalk replaced. Uh, questions or concerns? All taken care of? All right, motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Trustees? Young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Resolution authorizing waivers of fees for property maintenance cleanup. Dan, you wanna speak about this quickly?
Sure, we, we have a couple of properties that, uh, several years ago, under prior owners, uh, fell into a state of, uh, they were unkempt, so we had to do what we need to do to go onto the properties and maintain them. In the timeframe between when we, uh, when the charges accrued and when we can put them as a lien on the tax bill, the property ownership change. And, you know, the, we can't, once the, the, uh, charges are leaned, uh, you cannot, uh, waive them. So if there's a desire to waive the fee as a matter of fairness for the owners, this is the opportunity before, uh, so we don't have to put out the lien.
So basically, it's new, it's new owners. These are not the people who got the violations or who didn't take your property.
You know, had this been done prior to the, had this been leaned prior to the sale, it would have been taken care of during the.
Right.
You know, the escrow process, but.
But, and the work was done way prior to the sale, correct?
Correct.
So why was that not immediately leaked?
Because you have to wait a cer, a statutory amount of time before you can lean it. I think it's what, I have to give it to the end, one year, so. In that one year timeframe, from when the charges accrued to when we had the opportunity to lean it, the ownership changed.
Thank you, Dan.
So, just as a matter of curious, what could be done in the future to prevent that from, from something like this happening again?
I mean, there's not much. I mean, it's, you know, we, the, the legal mechanism to get the money is to lean the property, but we can't lean it until that year is passed, so. I, I, I don't know how we could, uh, how we can enforce that. I can certainly talk to the attorney to see if there's anything creative we could do. But, you know, it's a, it's a statutory thing for when unpaid, uh, ta, unpaid fees, uh, get leaned. I just seen the same thing with the water, water reverts. You have to wait a long time for that to happen.
Okay.
I understand. I, I, what I was thinking of, is there a way of notice and ha, and having it filed somewhere so that when a property search is done, that they will find out that there's a, you know, an outstanding obligation?
I, I can talk to the attorney. I, I'm not familiar with that, you know, the law in that area.
Okay. Okay. I think, I think we should look into that for the future. Thank you.
Okay, uh, I need a motion to add an item to the agenda. This is the item that, uh, Mr. Sonoff brought to our attention.
No, do we have to vote on this?
Waivers.
Waivers, we have to vote on it.
Yeah, we have to vote on this. Well, I'm, I'm adding a motion, an item to the agenda.
We still have to vote on that.
Oh, sorry, the waivers. I'm, my, my apologies. My apologies. Uh, in, in case of remembering this, I forgot to vote. Uh, call the roll, please. Is there item at first? First move.
Second.
Nora, Lucas? Trustees, young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi, thank you. And I, I jumped the gun a little bit because I didn't wanna forget this and I knew, I, I wrote something, add item on the thing there. Uh, so this is what, uh, Mr. Sonoff sent to us this afternoon about the community choice aggregation that had to be, uh, that had to be decided right away because they have a very short window. Any questions or concerns?
So, we should just explain it. Can you just explain it?
And can you give us a quick expla, quick explanation?
Yep, uh, it was just part of the community choice aggregation program. We're looking to extend the current agreement for six months to the end of this year. Uh, they're looking to negotiate a new price for the energy. Originally agreement was supposed, the original agreement capped it at twelve point six cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, their due diligence is finding that that's not gonna be a reasonable price. So they're asking to have it increased to thirteen point nine cents per kilowatt hour for the, uh, uh, will be considered a, uh, a, a good, uh, response to their RFP. That's kind of the, the quick, quick version.
So it's, uh, the price, the price of electricity is going up and, uh, people can opt out if they want.
That's correct.
You might pay a little more to save the environment. So, yeah, come on. Think of your grandchildren before you make a rash decision. I need a motion to add this to the agenda. Have we done that?
So moved.
All in favor of adding it to the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, now I need a motion to adopt this.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Doreen's hand is up. Let me just see what she wants here. Ms. Ronnie, uh, mute yourself. Doreen, you want to say something?
Hear me?
Yes.
I unmuted myself because I'm waiting for, uh, communications to the board too, so I'll wait until then.
All right, thanks. Sit tight. You're almost there. Uh, all roll?
Trustees, young?
Yes.
Sanchez?
Yes.
Lucas?
Yes.
The four?
Yes.
Mayor Murphy?
Hi. Ms. Ronnie, it's communications to the board, round two. You're up.
I'm.
You just muted yourself.
Muted.
Now you're unmuted, okay, stay like that.
Well, my, my, my dashboard is telling me differently. I could appreciate all the hard work everybody's doing, and I applaud you on trying to figure out what's going on with the dam. Hopefully you'll figure out who owns it, so on and so forth. But the state of our rivers have been in bad shape for a very, very long time. And I'm pretty sure when you did the budget tonight, you weren't concerned about the language in there, but you were concerned about numbers. I know monies are going towards a fund to clean the rivers and all that kind of thing. But what I find very interesting in is, is there is one village department that is charged with cleanup of the dam and our rivers. And that's the highway department, so I'd like to know what the schedule is, what the regular basis is within their work duties. So that we can move forward and have, you know, clean out flows to the dam and clean rig of rivers on a regular basis. And that all comes to another portion in littering. Because there's a whole bunch of litter all over the village and I don't know how you want to force that one, but that's been a problem for a long, long time. So I really would like to find out if there could be regularly scheduled maintenance by the highway department, which is in our budget. As they are tasked to clean the dam and the river and hope to hear back on that.
Thank you. All right, anybody else? All right. Report from the village manager, Dan, you got it?
Yeah, Jerry asked me to report on several items. I'm gonna take one item out of order because Doreen just brought it up, forced labor river cleaning. Ahead of the dredging project, we have completed our first work, first week of using village forces to clean in the river. We started on Rockland and Fayette in the Sheldrake and working backwards down the river. We will continue to clean sections as the weather permits and throughout the summer. On the dam, we met with GHD engineers and have scheduled a meeting this week to discuss the violations with the DEC. We have an inspection and maintenance plan, we'll be submitting an EAP plan providing annual certification within the next few months. The Order on Consent, five point five million dollar village sewer remediation project phase one is seventy five percent complete. Phase two, beginning of the final review, is complete by the county DOH and the village. The cost is approximately three million dollars. Roadway and parking lot paving will restart again this week in the village. Palmer Avenue, Library Lane, Harbor Island Parker next. Mamarone Avenue will be paid by the county midsummer, we believe, beginning August one. Additional pavement will be scheduled for the fall. We just spoke about Port Prospect and Fenimore, and we're looking to begin that soon. The contractor for that is the same contractor who's doing the sidewalk work on Waverly and East Prospect Avenue. During the work session, I reported about the May eighteenth Army Corps meeting, we have several staff members who are working on arranging that. We're also working with LHC and hopefully being of assignment cast, the meeting in Spanish. One sixty nine Mount Pleasant Avenue, the exterior work is proceeding. And as scheduled, we have engaged an architect to redesign the interior and help us deal with the moisture control issues. Last, Jerry wanted to report that we have assembled an internal neighborhood task force led by the manager to go out to various community sections and I use the word interfere with some of the misuse of properties. For example, commercial use of property in a residential section, overcrowding or excessive trash inside and rear yards will be addressed. Additionally, we'll be looking at industrial and commercial properties along the rivers that have stockpiled debris. And that concludes the report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Clerk Treasurer?
Yes, Mayor. Wanted to notify everybody that the dog license renewals have been sent to the license holders, due by May first, twenty twenty two. Also, the village has received a written nurse of defect in Harbor Island Park.
Thank you, I just, the dog license renewal, folks, dogs are not allowed in any park except Harbor Island Park. And they have to be on a leash. I don't know how much more clear we can be. We are endeavoring to put in a dog park in Harbor Island Park. But that, you know, it's gonna be a bit of a while, but that doesn't mean you get to run your dog off leash, okay? So please, keep your dog on a leash. Report from the village attorney?
Nothing on mine, your honor.
Daniel, you have your hand up?
Yeah, back to the village manager's report, Dan, we asked a couple of weeks ago and a couple of weeks before that for the paving schedule and the roads that will be done, so we still are looking for that.
Okay.
Okay, minutes, commission, boards committees, minutes of the Board of Trustees, budget meeting of April sixth, work session, regular meeting of April eleven, twenty twenty two. Minutes of the odd council of March seventh, twenty twenty two, minutes of the Board of Architecture Review of March seventeenth, twenty twenty two. Minutes, minutes of the planning board meeting on March twenty third, twenty twenty two, minutes of the Recreation Fox Committee meeting of March second, twenty twenty two. Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, good night.